All right, does that sound like the right volume level back there in the back? Mr. Winlet, all right, fantastic. Like to call the regular meeting of the city of Chattahoochee Hills City Council for February sixth, twenty twenty four to order. Let the record reflect that all council members with the exception of Mr. Schmidt are present for tonight's meeting. Like to remind anybody who wants to make a public comment tonight to fill out a yellow comment card, you'll find those on the table at the front entrance. Hand those to the city attorney after you fill them out. If you would, please turn off the ringer on your cell phone. Take a second to do that myself. And stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of that is the approval of the meeting agenda. Is there anything that we need to add or change? If not, can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve the meeting agenda? Second, we have a motion in a second in the discussion. If not, all those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Agenda stands adopted. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January ninth, twenty twenty four. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion, anything anybody needs changed? If not, all those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Minutes stand approved. We have several presentations today, and we will start with a presentation from Greystone about progress on fiber.
Good evening.
Can we start with the wild applause now, or should we?
You want to make me feel really good? That'd be nice. First, thank you for having me. My name's Eric Landon. I'm with Greystone Connect on the VP of the broadband side of the business. You know, I want to thank you, Mr. Reed, Mary Reed, and everybody else, and especially Mary Beth, our one of our board members. And everybody that's been very grateful and helpful for us to come into the community and it's been really open armed. Which I really appreciate. Makes my job a little easier. They've been all good phone calls and reception, which is great. So what I'll do is I'll go through kind of where we are, where we're planning on going, and you know how we're going to move forward. So if we can go to the next slide, please. And that's it. Okay. All right, so as most people know, or about to know, the pilot fiber to the home project spans over hundreds of miles of aerial and underground, majority that is aerial, especially this footprint. You know, what we were trying to do is make sure that we're doing quality, we're trying to, you know, be respectful of everybody's property and stuff like that, so. We try to, especially when we're going to any part of underground, we're making that customer contact, a member contact, and making sure that you understand where we're going, especially when we're coming into your property, which direction and stuff like that. We can go to the next slide. So really, this is just a timeline of what it looks like. So the way it all starts off is we look at our footprint, where we're going to go, we start making make-ready engineering, and really what that is at a high level view is saying that this is the direction we're going to go. How does that look? You know, how's that path look? Are there trees? You know, we're doing aerial stuff like that. We get everything situated, make the path clear. We then start with our fiber construction, and you'll see a lot of trucks out there right now. Especially in the area. I was out there earlier today. We've seen a lot of bucket trucks, stuff like that. You'll see them working on the poles and some underground in some of the neighborhoods. Then we go from there, we start splicing. Once we splice the fiber, we certify that fiber. So what we're doing is we're doing a lot of testing, making sure that we have our connectivity, everything's working up to the pole. And then from there, we start looking at the service side. So then we go from the pole to the customer's home, to the member's home. And that's when you'll see some flags, stuff like that going up to your house, maybe from the road right away, stuff like that. At that point, we start activating that service line, and we kind of do the same thing as we did when you go back to number four. You'll see we do some splicing there. It's really the same concept, but now we're really taking it to the members' home. And then the last piece of that is going into the members' home where we do a home certification, and it's really the same process. We go into the home, we run the wire, we test that wire, and then we also make sure that everything in that home's devices are working and stuff. So, next slide. So this is our first zone. If you look at the colors there, you'll see kind of where we're at, we're near the last phase of construction on the first zone. So you know, you think back to the other side, we're really at the point of we built a lot of the fiber up to the poles, ready to get to the customers. We're going to start the next phase, which means we'll start doing some scheduling. I'm sure some people, some members have already called in, asking when they're going to get it. And then we kind of follow that loop. We go back, we make the customer contact back, say, hey, you said you were interested. We're ready to do installs, and we're scheduling for the twenty eighth at this time to start our installations. This month, you can cheer at that one if you want. So, so the signup process is just like this, right? So you go onto our website, you'll see a lot of our signs that are out there in the road, stuff like that. We're trying to do as much advertising as we can. We'll give you the website, where to go, click on greystoneconnect.com. Once you get on that page, you just fill out your information here. Then at that point, we now understand that you're a member, you want services, and then we come back around, and we're ready, and we start doing installs. Next slide. Once that piece happens, we come back and we schedule your install. Then we go in there and start finishing the splicing, we get everything done, that goes back to the original slide where we're at, like probably getting close to the end there. Next slide, please. And really, that's it. I mean, so once we get to that last piece is where we're installing into the customer's home. So the twenty eighth is really the big day for us of just saying, hey, we're available for you for these members in this area, and we can do your install. Questions?
So, thank you very much. Mary Beth Wansley, stand up for a second, please. So Gary Miller, the CEO of Greystone, probably got so sick and tired of Mary Beth and I in his office talking about this over the course of what, four or five years? That he finally gave up and said, okay, fine, we'll run the fiber, and here it is now. And I'm sure Mary Beth had far more to do with it than I did, but it is such a game changer for Chattahoochee Hills. Everybody in the entire city will have access within a few months, I'm just gonna, whatever that is, sooner is better, to actual high-speed internet, which, as we all know, is pretty much a condition for getting by in life nowadays. Particularly in a place like this where you have bad cellphone coverage in places. I mean, it gets your phone, it gets you all the stuff, so. Again, incredibly appreciative of the work that you guys have done, and that you actually have done all the things you said you were going to do faster than you said you were going to do them. So again, huge thanks to Greystone and all the people that made this happen. I have read the Arbor Day proclamation probably, I don't know, forty times in my time as mayor. It is in the book, it is on the agenda, it is online. I'm not going to read it again. Suffice it to say that trees are one of the things that we're trying to save in Chattahoochee Hills. It's one of the reasons that our amazing zoning exists, and there is something to be celebrated here. We're going to be doing the planting on which day, Daryl, remind me?
I believe it's sixteen.
On the sixteenth. And where are we doing that? Where, where are we doing it? There you go, fruit trees in Crocker Mill Park. I am sure there will be a posting of the exact time of that. It's usually around lunchtime. And you're welcome to join us, but the real thing about this is on Arbor Day, if you feel so inclined, find a place around your house, plant a tree somewhere, because it is very much in keeping with what Chattahoochee Hills is about. And then the next thing is an interpretive dance by the Chatsworth Convention and Visitor Bureau. No, I'm sorry, a presentation, and I don't know who's doing what, so. Sure, I thought it was going to be like that, like.
Flash models.
Yeah, you should.
We haven't done this before. Good evening, Council, City Staff, and Chattahoochee Hills residents. We are the Chattahoochee Hills Convention and Visitor Bureau, and we're here tonight to present with our branding partners, who we'll introduce shortly, the results of last year of work towards defining our city's branding efforts as it relates to tourism and trade. First, we'd like to pose a question to the council. If you would please close your eyes. If you, if you had to think of one image for Chattahoochee Hills, what would you choose? Now think about our tone of voice. Now, a quick sentence summarizing the whole of what this city offers its current residents, visitors, and investors alike. Okay, please open your eyes. I'm sure you thought of many colorful images and layered messages about the history of our city, of who we are now and who we want to be in the future. Chattahoochee Hills is fertile ground. This is an opportunity and challenge of place of destination branding, even more so for a city as unique as ours.
Defining a city's identity today is not a minor matter, is almost a question of survival. Not just economically, but there's an essential need for identity. How does Chat Hill fit into our local region? How are we different? How do we complement these places around us, and also, how do we contrast against them? A great destination brand can also transform a location's identity into a sense of feeling and allegiance to that location. This is something many Chat Hills residents and businesses already have, but don't always have a way to communicate or share it with others, really. If we can define who we are, then we can explain it to others. That paves the way to continued economic success as a city. The Chattahoochee Hills Convention and Visitors Bureau, CHCBB, was formed in the fall of twenty twenty two due to the explosive growth of interest and development of the area. From residential housing to independently owned and operated farms, to commercial space, restaurants, parks, and trails, Chat Hills is becoming a premier destination for living, meeting, and visiting. The CHCBB's goal is to promote the city's tourism and trade industries while also supporting economic interests and developments in and around our growing city. But first, before we can comprehensively promote ourselves, we have to lay the groundwork for who we are as a city, or better yet, who we want to be known as.
Our first step was to create a brand logo and messaging that could support a web and social media presence, as well as future marketing campaigns. Our goal was that branding would have an eye towards the future and consider what Chat Hills would look like ten to fifteen years from now. Forward thinking was critical. Chat Hills has something for everyone. We, and we aim to further clarify how best to communicate that and continue to reach, inspire, and engage those who appreciate our varied amenities and preservation-oriented development model.
We want our brand to speak to our current residents, both new and generational, and for residents to be proud of their city and how they're represented. We wanted our brand to speak to a broad audience, everyone from day trippers, culinary enthusiasts, overnight vacationers, nature and art enthusiasts, history buffs, outdoor recreation, wellness and corporate retreats, and potential new residents. We are working with an agency to create branding that will serve as the roadmap for the future of Chat Hills tourism industry.
We sent out an RFP, Request for Proposal, to thirty-one branding agencies throughout the US. We garnered great interest with eleven of those companies submitting proposals for our consideration. We ultimately selected three of those companies to go through the interview process. After a thorough interview process, we selected Atlanta-based agency Suns and Suns to lead the way for our branding efforts. Suns and Suns has deep expertise in the brand space, working with clients such as Coca-Cola, Patagonia, Etsy, Chick-fil-A, Disney, and Sonos, to name some familiar brands. We were impacted with their successful rebrand of Midtown Atlanta, as well as their work for the Atlanta History Center, and trust for public lands, especially the Chattahoochee Riverlands Project. So we asked Suns and Suns to fully immerse themselves in our city. In July, they toured thirteen key sites in and around Chattahoochee Hills, as well as spoke to constituents in depth about their experience living or working in our community. Over the course of the last seven to eight months, we've worked with Suns and Suns on branding efforts through one-on-one interviews, group workshops, brand exercises, and more. This research has provided the foundational support for creating our city's brand direction and positioning Chattahoochee Hills as a premier destination location.
And while most of our wins here are visual identity, graphic logo, design guidelines, we will be, which will be presented to tonight, we believe this will open up more conversation about the inclusivity and the blended goals of our city and community as a whole. It will also give our investors and companies visual representation of who we are and the type of businesses we could and would support in Chattahoochee Hills. Our hope is that it also gives the current Chat Hills businesses of all types a foundation of community and support, a foundation of support and community engagement. We're really excited to have our agency partners with us this evening to share their process and the results that came out of all the work that we did together collectively. We can talk more about the specific ways we can use this branding, as well as answer any questions at the end of the presentation, and we actually have some small surprises for all of you. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce our agency partner and new friends, Sun and Suns.
Maybe daughters and daughters.
Hi, everybody. That was an amazing introduction from the CHCBB board. My name is Madeline Tate. I have been the project manager and client lead on this project. I was involved with the strategy and interview process primarily when we were speaking to not only the board, but also residents and different players in Chattahoochee Hills to gain an understanding of who you guys are and what this place is and its story. And yes, it's been a really exciting, really fun project to be a part of.
Hi, I'm Leah Walkley. I'm a part of Sun and Suns as well on the design team. We, do we want to go ahead and pull up the presentation? So we have a little presentation for you all tonight to kind of talk through where you can see this brand live besides on the board's t-shirts, which we are very excited about. So, our, when we approach a city or any sort of company, when we're considering a new brand, it's so much more than just a logo. We dive into what it really means to be said logo city or said company logo. What you really need to represent yourselves fully. So that's why we immerse ourselves with interviews, with site visits. We've been here a number of times. We've spoken with all the board members in depth. And we really got to feel like we're a part of Chattahoochee Hills, which is the key in creating a successful brand. So, Robbie, if you want to just kind of flip through while we talk, that would be great. So as you can see, for a city, a big part of the brand, it needs to be functional, kind of at its core, because it's it goes on formal documentation, it goes on government buildings, on government trucks and whatnot, but before the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we got to have a little start with a little bit more playfulness. So we approached this brand, it's very legible. It's very easy to recognize, it's very recognizable in any form. So as you, as we've looked at this document, you'll see that there are a couple of different iterations in its formal place. It's Chattahoochee Hills Convention Visitors Bureau. But our hope is that it just becomes Chattahoochee Hills in terms of colloquial language, when you're speaking about where we are and the goal of the Convention Visitors Bureau, which is the trade and tourism aspect. So you'll see, it's a clear, friendly typeface, which is just kind of the design vernacular that we'll talk through. We've got a fun color palette that relates to the area itself. So we've got a green relating to the nature aspect. Same with the Georgia clay red or orange. We were representing the Chattahoochee River with the blue color, and then of course, just neutrals with nature in this flower, alluding to the culinary aspect of the area. Functions vary simply on documentation, business cards, letterheads, like you name it, anything that you need to use for everyday business purposes.
Yeah, so we're going to start this presentation, look at some really functional things, and then kind of go to where this brand can go to a more evocative place and a little bit more of a storytelling spot, which is, there's a great example of it right here.
Yes, Madeline said it perfectly. So the really cool thing when we started playing with this design and really refining it is that we decided that it can really function as a portal into what Chattahoochee Hills is. And as you see on the next couple of slides, we're literally putting photos of Chattahoochee Hills, things that we enjoy, the nature, the business, the development aspects into our logo itself. So we're in some of the next couple of slides, you'll see there are literal cutouts of the logo placed in the environment, just to show that we're a portal, and that's what the Convention Visitors Bureau really can serve as, is a portal to get people to come here, to visit here, to grow their businesses here, to raise families here, to open up their small businesses. So that's kind of part of the function of our logo.
Yeah, we like the idea that it could hold the very many different things that are happening here, right? This isn't Coca-Cola, we don't have a product, right? We have a city that's vibrant and expansive and has a lot of different things going on, and so we wanted the brand to reflect that.
And then we also, a large part of the conceptual aspect when we were doing research for this is we realized that Chattahoochee Hills is such a dichotomy of so many different things. You're right next to the Atlanta airport, yet you're in the middle of nature, and you've got creeks and trails in the river. But you're, you've got you've got the global aspect with the connections, you've got the local aspect, you've got farmers that you're building sustainable buildings that have like green, green and LEED certifications right next to them, but they're doing ancient techniques and practices. And then you've got culinary and innovative like culinary aspects and practices, but you have but then like you can go out after dinner and you're, you see all the stars, which you don't get in Atlanta, which is pretty special and it's pretty amazing. So Chattahoochee Hills is what we like to, like encompasses this juxtaposition of life. It gets you away from the big city, but it gives you the possibility, you don't have to choose between the suburbs, you don't have to choose between the bustling downtown urban areas, but you can have it all right here. And so it gives you a third option and like a new path forward. And so your life can be whatever you make it, and Chattahoochee Hills is the vehicle for that. You'll see in the presentation, there's just some really basic fun things that we can do with this brand too. In the mark itself, we can stretch it and grow in, so it becomes a really fun graphic element, but also it becomes really ownable. So the CH logo mark is what you'll see on the t-shirts, you'll see it on some fun gifts, I should say, from Steve in a moment, but it becomes the identity, and then it also starts to become something that the city can own and not just the bureau. From a very functional standpoint, you've got the extended version, you've got a version that just says Chat Hills, because we all like to say Chat Hills when we're talking Chattahoochee is a pretty long word, but it's it's something that can really, it's a foundation for a brand that can really grow and change and become ownable and recognizable for developers, for families, for visitors, for business leaders, government leaders.
And I think throughout this presentation, you can see, Robbie, if you go up a little bit. Right, we want this brand to play in different spaces, so we have this CH mark that is on this documentation, pretty formal stuff, but then it also works in these more agricultural spaces, rural spaces, right? Like we want to be true to where we are and who we are. And so that dichotomy that Leah was talking about, you'll see in the graphic applications as well, and as well as the mark itself, the CH, right? It works really well small. This is also a small functional thing from a design standpoint, right? We can put it on our letterhead, but we can also put it on a silo, and it looks just as good and conveys the meaning that we need it to.
Yes.
And the fence top.
And the fence top, right, yes. Yes, exactly. And signage, so this, if you keep scrolling, this sign is one that has the current Chattahoochee Hills. Welcome to Chattahoochee Hills on it. So this would be, you know, like things that we can easily implement into what's already existing. It doesn't have to be a whole takeover or like redo of what's here. So that kind of helps it flow into the community as simply as possible, but it's also very exciting and new and fresh.
Yeah, and so if you look at our, the actual logo mark, right, we have CH Chattahoochee Hills, but we also have brought in this organic component, right? It has a curve in the H, and that kind of conveys a sense of personality and who we are, right? This is where we are. It's a placemaking brand, right? We want people to have an understanding of the place and where we are and what's offered there.
Yeah, it serves as a visual representation of the hills and the river, but it also it also can function very well on government vehicles, as we can see. Very official. And so we just want you guys to see how this brand can really work into every aspect of Chattahoochee Hills. It's such a diverse place with so many opportunities in the future, and so we just, we're excited. We hope you guys are excited. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer. The board's happy to answer, the bureau is happy to answer as well. And here you can see just a little summary page of like the different ways we can show up visually. So.
Yeah, that's from us. If we're gonna open it up to any design questions, we can step in, or I don't know if. Yeah.
I mean, if you guys have any questions, for sure, you know, a piece of, of just, I guess, level setting on this, right? So the mentioned visitor bureau has taken upon themselves to do this. This is their branding that they've come up with. The conversation of if and how that spreads to city otherwise is something that we'll be having in the future. It's not something we're deciding tonight. But that is where we stand right now, and we don't normally do Q and A up here, but you guys are welcome to ask. No, 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 it's fine. It's, it's, it's fine. You guys are welcome. They can do whatever they want, so. You're welcome to ask questions if you want to.
I loved it. I thought it was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
So following the meeting, we have stickers to pass out for everyone who wants it. And part of our team will be over here at this table that's been covered, and we have caps and t-shirts. So you can buy them and take them home for your very self. You're a great team. You can see what a great board we have. It's worked really dedicated to make this all happen. Thanks, thanks.
I feel like it's a long time since I've done branding work. Remember that well. Appreciate the effort that goes into that. I know how much time it takes to create a new brand, so thanks very much for all that work. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment, which is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and provide their input and opinions on any matter not scheduled for its own public hearing. We don't have any public hearings, so public comments all the way up tonight. When your name is called, please come forward, speak into the microphone directly to the council, stating your name and address for the record. You're allowed three minutes for your personal remarks, and I see that we have some comment.
We have one, Mr. Mayor, Nan McGuffey.
Hello, I'm Nan McGuffey, eight two five five, Atlanta, Noonan Road. And I am here on behalf of Brickworks Library. I manage the library here at Brickworks and I'd just like to sort of let you know what happened last year. Um, last year we had about 10 patrons using the library. We have six wonderful volunteers that have worked very hard to make the library, um, a safe place. Make the library a place where you will want to come. And we've had 14 classes that we held last year with a little over about a hundred and three attendees. Our most, um, consistent class is toddler Tuesdays. Everyone needs to experience toddler Tuesdays. So this is, um, birth to pre, um, pre K. And we have, um, the first and the third Tuesday of the month is when we hold these here at the library. We've had eight kids, but I am so excited to say that starting in March, we've had two more volunteers come on. So we will be held in toddler Tuesday every week. So I'm really excited about that. We've had over 500 books, um, donated. These have been mostly brand new books, which we really, really needed to lightly used books. We purchased a new library system and in the process now of entering our books into the system. We also have two computers that, um, will eventually be ready for, um, the community to use, which the fiber is going to be an awesome thing for that. Um, this year, I would like to say that we are, um, coming up with some classes that will be the end of February, the first of March. We will have these classes, some of them will, will be repeat from, of classes from last year, but we will have a lot of new classes also. And we've just purchased some, six subscriptions to magazines that pertain to the rural area that we live in. And they will be available for checkout. Um, the current issue will be there, but that the back issues will be able to be checked out. You can follow us on Facebook and Instagram. And don't ask me how, but yeah, you can. And then our, um, library hours are Mondays and Thursdays from 12 to 5, and then on Tuesdays from 10 to 5. And I just want to thank everybody who participated in last year's classes and I look forward to doubling everything for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ma'am, and please pass along to everybody how much we appreciate all the work that those volunteers do. You guys do an amazing amount of community work in Brickworks. All right. Next up are our staff reports and we will start with a financial update from the city manager.
Hey, good evening again, Mayor, Council, Staff, Citizens. Awesome C V B. All right. That was great. It's a great presentation. Let's get on to financials. We are in, uh, we're in February. And you have the financials in your report. It's about 58% through the fiscal year. And as I talked through a little bit of the financials, I'm going to touch on another gen item that's going to come before you tonight. We talked about during the work session, which is budget amendments. And so I highlight a few areas. When you look at the financials, you'll see, uh, areas, um, like, uh, property taxes. Uh, we've collected a hundred percent plus of those and also, uh, motor vehicle tax, ad valorem, same there. Um, some business occupational tax, we collected a hundred percent of that plus. And some areas that stand out are things like, uh, the insurance premium tax, a hundred percent of that, which was a little bit over. So we have a budget amendment for that as well, but not much to say about the revenues expenditures. I got a few areas I just wanted to talk about on, let's think it's the third, fourth page in. When we get to, uh, general fund expenditures, Januaries, we've got, uh, just a high level. And if you guys want anything, if you want me to go deeper, I can, uh, but I always like to do a high level from departments, uh, city council and all the other departments in the city. And, um, from administration and finance, you know, when you look down there and you see how much the percent is expended, you know, you're trying to look for, all right, what are we at 50%, 58%, 60%? Are we over? And I always like to look at those and say, well, by, why are we over 58%? And if you look in administration and finance, we're over, but we're not over for any other reason than the fact that we acquired some financial software, as you know, because you're looking at the ramp, the evidence of having new finance software. So we, uh, we didn't budget for it. We, we talked about getting it. We acquired it after the fiscal year. So that's, we'll take care of that with the budget amendments. And then you'll see, I always like to talk about, um, in my old finance report, I broke it out, I broke out capital a little differently. So I can talk about areas that we spend particularly on roads. Because right now, the way you'll see it, you'll see a lot of the, um, the money that's broken out in, in, in public works, for instance, you'll see it might, there might be a little bit over budget, not by much, but that's because a lot of those funds are going toward roads. And so if you see something that's over in public works and you think, hey, wait a second, what's going on there? You know, just ask me, those are a lot of, a lot of capital expenditures are coming out of there. But other than that, we've only, uh, we're at 65% expend, expenditures in a general fund. And then we've got our other funds, hotel motel and T-Spot, I always like to point out as well. Hotel motel is very, um, germane tonight because we listen, we heard the C V B. And so, you know, we are, the money that comes in is being spent, as you see evidence tonight, is spent for a good reason, doing some branding with the, with the C V B. And T-Spots, there's still money in that account because we haven't, uh, spent that money yet, because we're waiting for the weather to improve for, before we do T-Spot. But that's, that's pretty much the financial report at 58% for fiscal year. I'll talk a little bit more when we get into budget amendments, but happy to answer any specific questions or if you have, um, any desire for any additional information or deeper dive, just let me know and I'll be happy to show those reports because the Tyler technology is, is working out really well and I'm learning it, which probably is a scary thing because the more I learn, the better I get. So, uh, I'm enjoying, uh, Michelle teaching me little tricks of the trade when it comes to our new finance software.
Do we have any questions? The, the best part of the news is in the budget update that you're about to do. So we'll, we'll wait for that.
Okay.
Next up is a fire department, fire department report from Chief Grant. Department.
Mayor, Council, Citizens, guests. The printed report on the side table over here, just to hit a few high notes. Um, want to make sure everybody realizes that through the emergency management function in our city, um, we try to address both the disaster response plan and the strategies behind that, that the city would follow. One of those has to do with extreme cold temps. You know, I haven't seen cold temps like we had in a few weeks ago in a, in a very long time. Uh, the report captured what our weather station was indicating off the top of Station 51 at 10 degrees. And, uh, of course wind chill made it even colder, but because of those extreme temps, um, in discussion with mayor and, uh, the city manager, we decided to implement a a warming station or shelter, you might want to think of it as that. Uh, we did that in concert with Atlanta Fulton County E M A, them providing some of the resources. We provided the warm space and some bottled water and some snacks and some oversight. And, um, you can never know. It's a, it's a game you play. You, you need to do it for those who might need it. It's not about the homeless issue. It's about those who just don't have the right place to be in such cold, cold temps. And that could really be any one of us, uh, at a given time. So we were successful in doing that. Um, earlier I addressed that we are continuing, uh, efforts to work with our other partner jurisdictions and, um, with the various state legislators to address some amount of reform, uh, in, in the, um, in the Senate, through the, through a Senate bill this session. And, um, I just want to say that I'm encouraged, uh, with conversations I've had in the last few days and, um, the plan that I think, uh, has come about that involves both the, all the fire chiefs in the northern end of the county and the fire chiefs in the south end of the county. We're all of one accord, uh, about how to, um, go about some reform through an amendment in this law, uh, that generally speaking, uh, relates mostly to patient transport services. You know, we talk a lot about citizen engagement. We talk about how we are close, we are family. We look after each other. I want to tell you what occurred on Sunday morning. At nine o'clock, I got a phone call from a, uh, person heading to church, uh, coming along Hutcheson Ferry just out of Palmetto. She called me and she said, Greg, there's a lot of fire over here behind this house and a lot of smoke. And I'm just, I'm worried about it. Um, should I go back and look? I said, no. And, and of course I know her, I candidly said, no, you should hang up and let me do my job. Which I, I jumped on the radio and started Palmetto. Here's the point. You had someone who had a backyard fire get away from them and it was into the back of the house. And the 71, 71-year-old gentleman didn't know it and this citizen made the call. And Palmetto was able to respond along with us. They arrived first and saved that gentleman's house. Lot of the siding on the back, vinyl siding and so it was melted and burned away. And I just use that as an example of how being mindful of what our neighbors and, and who we all are to each other is so important in this community. It's what keeps me grounded here. And the service that we want to provide. Um, on the side of having to say goodbye to some things, uh, Chief Henry Argo, you voted, uh, last month for a proclamation, uh, to recognize his retirement after 47 years, uh, in the fire business. And so he has now gone on from being the fire chief to the city administrator in Palmetto, which I think bodes well for us and some of the issues that we'll need to discuss and plan with them. This EMS issue among, among many. And, um, Chief Tim Shore, Tim Shore has been working with them for quite a long while. He'd already retired, uh, from Walton County as a battalion chief. He's a younger guy. He is, um, full of energy, full of knowledge. And, um, we couldn't have a better number two guy step in and continue with all that the Palmetto and city of Chattahoochee Hills means to each other. Finally, at the top of the report, I asked Chief McCarragher, uh, our deputy chief, and, uh, you know him as our fire marshal and he handles the operations, day-to-day operations with personnel. I asked him to write something for us under the chiefly speaking column there. I hope you'll read it because he emphasizes that thing that is so important to me every day. And I know it's important to you and we see evidence of it. And that's, he calls this building the bench. You're only as good as the bench you sit on or the bench you rely on, the players on the bench and so forth. So, um, uh, to give that a read, he, he's, his, he has a big heart uh, for doing this job and doing it well within this city. Questions? Observations? About my department.
I have an observation.
Okay.
Uh, I went to that retirement celebration that, uh, you and Cindy Hansen had a big hand in pulling together. And just want to again, highlight what an amazing event that is. The fire department does such an incredible job of sending people off when they retire. And, and they were actually able to keep it a surprise. And when Henry walked in, saw his wife sitting there, he immediately started bawling. It was the, not a dry eye in the house.
Yeah, it was great.
A beautiful event and, and I just want to appreciate you again for helping make that happen.
He's a great friend. He'll go on being that for our city. He really understands us well. I told him, I said, now that I've had you in training for 10 years, you should really do well about Chattahoochee Hills.
All right. Uh, next up is a report from our police chief Kevin Degoo, who has spent enough time in Alaska and he thinks 10 degrees is not very cold. I heard that snort all the way from up here.
Just as a perspective, the last couple of weeks back home, it's been anywhere from 60 to 70 below zero. So, you know, 10, 10 above is shorts and T-shirt weather. Anyway, um, good evening, council, uh, citizens. Yeah, before you, the, the month report. That, just a typical month for us. Our call volume was up by about 150% from this time last year, which resulted in more incidents. Um, our officers are doing a lot more patrolling, um, in the areas. Um, one thing that I wanted to, uh, it's not on here, but I wanted to, to mention is last week I went to the, the chief's day at the Georgia Capitol. Um, and I was elected by other Georgia chiefs to be a representative on the legislative board. So now I'm now a, a representative from the Georgia Chiefs on the legislative board. Um, I, I bring that up because one of the things that we discussed is state accreditation is, is in process for, to be mandatory throughout the state. And it, it passed, it's passing the House right now. It should pass the House and then go to the Senate. There's no reason to see why it won't be signed into law. I mentioned that because, um, if it goes through, it'll be mandatory by the end of 2025 for all law enforcement agencies in the state of Georgia to be state accredited. And if they're not, they can suffer penalties from not being able to receive grants all the way up to losing their charter, losing their powers of arrest. You don't have to worry about that with Chattahoochee Hills because we're already state accredited. So, um, one other thing that I wanted to mention is that, uh, I'm sure you may have saw in the newspaper last week, there was a cyber attack at Fulton County. Um, it did affect a plethora of services. Um, the one thing that, and it affected our, our 911 center. However, it did not affect your ability to call 911 and have police or fire or EMS dispatched to you. So some of the computer systems and they're working and they're, they're doing what they need to do and fix it. And I, I think some people that had tax issues got notifications that that was, that was affected. But you, you can still call 911 and we'll still come. I just wanted to, I got a few phone calls asking if, if our 911 doesn't work anymore. And that's, that's not true. So. Any questions for me?
No, but since you brought it up and because Greg mentioned somebody calling him on his personal phone, uh, which is wonderful if you happen to have Greg Brett's phone number on your phone. But 911 is the place to call when you have an issue that needs public safety response, no matter what the circumstances are. Uh, even if you think it's not that big a deal, call 911. If it's that stray dog, call 911. It is the best way to get to our officers, our public safety folks most quickly. And also, uh, because of the issues that we have in some of the edges of the city, we're close to other jurisdictions. Make sure when you're calling 911, that you're asking for Chattahoochee Hills. They can
That is correct.
To Chattahoochee Hills dispatch. But every time somebody brings up 911, I'm gonna take the opportunity to remind people how we have to do it here to make sure we get to our folks and that, that is the best way to do it.
Absolutely.
Unless you want to get Greg out of the shower, in which case do whatever, but that, that, that is not the right way, generally speaking.
Correct.
Next up is a public works report from Director Windland.
That's fly, ain't it? That's a fly beard. Man, council and residents, I'll just be honest with you, if I cut my leg off with chainsaw, I'm calling Greg straight up. They already do. Yeah, yeah, I always appreciate that. I always talk about, uh, Nan forgot to mention that we, we got some power out there. Yeah. Yeah, we got, finally got power out there. They got fans and they get in this all the way down. So in the summertime, they're feeding, uh, giving food out. And then plus they got outlets down there, so they want to run the heaters. We're adding a new one tomorrow, another outlet on the farther, farther end, uh, another request. So yeah, that's, that's good. We'd like to, I mean, we are making sure that they get what they need. They serve the community. It's amazing what they do. Uh, also, uh, Greg brought up the cold weather, which, uh, Kevin says it's not cold. Uh, but I ain't from Alaska. It's cold to me. Uh, what we did is like always, we, we have this conversation pretty much every month about how we work together. Um, I come in, uh, one of my staff, we stayed a couple of nights in my office, uh, got all the trucks ready and with salt. I got some of the bridges taken care of and you notice there was no issues with travel. We're not set up. I know a lot of people don't understand that we're not set up to, to put salt on every one of our roads. We just, there's no sense in buying a half a million dollar truck to do that once every three years if we do it. So we just try to take, maintain the roads that we can get to and scrape with the motor grader that we have and put salt on bridges. As of now, there's been a lot of rain. Um, Rodney, you asked me earlier about the gravel roads. Uh, the gravel roads are in good shape. They're, the, the stability of them are good. They do need scraping and we are, that's what we do. I get people calling on this end when we're in that end and it's a process and then we just go through the city. Uh, but the roads look amazing. I'm surprised with the heavy rain we got, how they hold up. There's a lot of, a lot of money that y'all have spent, a lot of money. If you go back the last four or five years and see how much money total, we we spent on gravel roads, it would absolutely amaze you how much money that y'all give to the city, to my department, to make sure these roads are maintained correctly. And also, we're continuing to cut right away with our sidearm. I had a couple people on the south side of the parkway asking, when are we gonna get there? We're on the north side. We're trying to finish up all the main roads now. And we're gonna try to get over towards Waterworks area and work our way back through the city within the next couple of weeks, but hopefully by the time spring, summer gets here, we'll have majority of it done, and we will get to bush hogging. Update on the parks. I met with Trust Public Land a couple days ago, which was yesterday, a day ago, excuse me, a day ago. Be correct. They are starting the work on the pavilion and the bathhouses on Riverlands and Hamilton Park. Hopefully, they're saying projected May, first of June being open. I'm not gonna hold them to that, but that's what they're saying. I think they have to be somewhere in there to get their returns and their grants. But we've worked hand in hand with them to try to push a lot of things that they don't have to wait on us to hold them up so we can get this done. So hopefully this summer we'll be having two more parks added that'll be open and to be used for the residents and outside people coming, visitors. That's, that's a lot more maintenance we got to do. Just love throw that in there. But anyway, that's all I have. Just normal for us. Any questions? Thank you all.
Thanks for being here, Darren. Next up is community development report by Director Morton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You again have the numbers in front of you for January. If you look at the, down about two-thirds of the way down, both single-family townhomes, single-family dwellings, twelve new homes permitted this month versus only two in January twenty twenty-three. So that's a big uptick. Maybe a bit due to the economy, but also we have more projects, more lots actually available for sale right now than we did just a little while back. So that's probably part of the reason for that. But overall, thirty permits versus nineteen a year ago, twenty-one COs versus eleven a year ago. So generally, activity is, is up. These numbers don't show those two new building permits for the bathrooms in the parks. Those were issued this month in February. They have planning commission meeting coming up a week from Thursday. That's the fifteenth at six thirty PM. On that agenda, we'll have two public hearings for the two items that we have on tonight's agenda for first read. And that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Go far. Thanks, Mike. All right, we have no public hearings. So the first item up tonight is a piece of unfinished business, twenty-three dash oh four four, which is the village rezoning on Cochrane Mill Road. As we discussed in the work session, the development agreement has, or is just going out to them, I think probably tomorrow. And there's still some discussion about a couple of the conditions that will be ready for us to look at next month, and again, potentially act on if we feel like it's ready for that. But for this month, I'd like to ask for a motion to defer twenty-three dash oh four four to next month's meeting, please.
I make a motion that we defer twenty-three dash oh four four until next month meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of deferring twenty-three dash oh four four, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right, so that's gonna be next month. Next up is twenty-four dash oh oh one, which is a charter change. There's a piece of language in the charter right now that is kind of in conflict with another piece of language in the charter around the composition of boards for the city. The composition of the Planning and Zoning Commission is something that's defined by state law, the other ones by our charter. And basically what we're doing is correcting this, and Rick, if you read the corrected language in a second, but the idea is that the city council can choose if it's in the city's interest to elect people to boards and commissions and authorities that maybe live outside of the city. We've had examples of that before, for example, Mary Beth, when she was on the Parks Commission. And this is just allowing, not requiring, but allowing the council the right to do that and clarifying the language so that it can.
Right, and this is not in your book, council members. This should be laying on the dais right in front of you. So the suggested change to section two thirteen subsection A of the charter, and it's just adding the sentences to that section, except for those who are appointed to the planning commission. Members of boards, commissions, or authorities of the city are not required to be current residents of the city. All planning commission members must be residents of the city at all times they are serving on the planning commission. So that's the recommended change or addition to that subsection.
And that just again clarifies the language so there's no internal conflict in the charter. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-four dash oh oh one?
Motion to adopt twenty-four dash oh oh one. Do I need to say as amended?
I guess so.
All right.
As red.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion about this one? If not, all those in favor of adopting twenty-four dash oh oh one as red, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
That carries three one. Next up is a new business item, which is twenty-four dash oh oh six, and Katie is gonna talk to us about that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This application is probably a little familiar for most of y'all from last year, but the applicant, Justin Robinson, has applied for a special use permit for twenty-eight point seven acres on eighty-seven thirty-five Wilkerson Mill Road. Their proposal is to allow a country end in the RL district. The subject property is located on the north side of Wilkerson Mill Road, just west of Petersburg Road and a little west of the city of Palmetto. The property is mostly wooded with a U-shaped pond to the rear of the property. The surrounding property is also mostly wooded with some single-family homes to the west, south, and east of the subject parcel. The proposed special use permit would allow Mr. Robinson to use the property to operate a country end. The space would include four four-unit cabins, a three thousand square foot kitchen, a seven thousand square foot dining venue, a small outdoor seating area, and a garden. Each of the sixteen cabin units will be eight hundred square feet. In addition to hosting guests to the country end, the applicant intends to host weddings in his indoor dining venue. The kitchen and dining venue will be accessory uses to the country end and will be used for guests of the estate.
All right, so this is the first read tonight. No action. If anybody has any questions of Katie, the applicants here too, if you have any questions, otherwise.
Katie, I did have one other question. The signage, I know how, what size or how would that be for us on that street?
It'll, we have a pretty strict sign guideline, so I believe for the RL district, it's thirty-two square feet if I'm not mistaken. So that's the maximum size requirement, but it would, unless we condition it differently, it would be a maximum of thirty-two square feet.
Okay, and also the, when you said that the other street, I mean, road, whatever, would be the emergency exit. Is there any way you can close that off? So if the only one exit to go in?
We can discuss that with the applicant.
Was that similar to what was done in that other hamlet in the back?
You can do a bollard with the non-spots on there or something, so the fire department can get in.
Now, I had a lot of questions during the work session, so I'm just was waiting on the, to see what planning says with their conditions.
Okay.
Thank you.
That is the next step with this, just in case people are wondering, this will go to the planning commission. Planning commission normally recommends either approval or not with whatever conditions, and they'll come back to us with those conditions. We can add conditions as well, and again, we'll talk about it and consider action next month. Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Next one up was another one of those first reads. Mike, you want to talk to us about this one?
That's right. Mayor and Council, as you're aware, last summer, June of last year, city council approved a sixteen hundred acres as a mixed-use hamlet for the purpose of operating a movie studio, along with five special use permits, and there were three variances on the project. The property did not sell to the applicant. The original owners still retain the property. The special use permits have expired based on the conditions that were adopted with the zoning. And so now the property owners have asked the city if we could revert the zoning back to its original RL zoning, as was also stipulated in the, in the conditions. And so the proposal before you would revert the zoning back to its original RL zoning and eliminate the three variances. And so if, if adopted, the zoning would be just as it was a year ago before, before all this, all this studio stuff reared its ugly head. Sorry, that was just a joke.
Sure about that. Does anybody have any questions, Mike? We're not acting on this, so there's no, again, we will talk about this next month, but in the meantime, Mike is here. Probably has more jokes in him. I don't know. Thank you, Mike. May be seated. Next up is twenty-four dash oh oh eight, which is a resolution changing the hotel motel tax rate. And I think, Rick, were you the one talking about that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Before you, council is a resolution that's requesting our delegation to the General Assembly to introduce a local act for us to collect hotel motel tax at the rate of eight percent. Currently, we're collecting it seven percent. In order to go to eight percent, we had to create the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Thank you guys for doing that, being serving on that. Also, the next step was to create the nonprofit entity. That's the Chattahoochee Hills Destination Marketing Organization, and that has been done. And both the city and the CBB have appointed members to that organization. So next, the last thing we have to do is get our, like I said, our delegation to the General Assembly to ask for a local act to be passed authorizing us to collect at eight percent, and we are restricted on how that money can be divided and spent between the three organizations. And so what this does is tell, gives confirmation to our delegation, that's what the council wants to do. So I'd request that you pass this resolution and then authorize either Robbie or me to be in contact with our delegation.
As we discussed at the meeting, this is obviously a tax paid by visitors to the city, not residents. And so it's one of those things where, again, money comes in from outside and can be used for a limited number of things inside. It's how we did our wayfinding, for example. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-four dash oh oh eight?
I make a motion that we adopt twenty-four dash zero zero eight.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion about this one? If not, all those in favor of adopting twenty-four dash oh oh eight, the eight percent hotel motel tax, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is twenty-four dash oh oh nine, which is a change in the charter that aligns the term of the mayor pro tem with the terms of the council. Rick, you want to talk about that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So when the city was originally chartered and created, all the council members, the mayor, served terms of four years that were all the same. They did not overlap with alternating every other year being elected. The mayor pro tem is still elected on four-year terms. What this revision does is to say that the term of the mayor pro tem will be for two years and will expire upon the first or the January following election. So that way, every new council gets to vote on their mayor pro tem. And again, this is a change that has to go to or go through the General Assembly. So this is just requesting that our delegation to the General Assembly introduce a local act approving that.
Great, thanks. All right, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-four oh oh nine, which is the change in the term of the mayor pro tem?
Make a motion to accept two four zero zero nine.
Second it.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adopting twenty-four dash oh nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Roger will go now. We are, sorry, I can't help myself.
Traffic, air traffic control call.
I love that.
Just in case a plane's landing.
Next up is twenty-four dash oh one oh, which is a resolution appointing board members to the Chattahoochee Hills Convention and Visitor Bureau. Talked about this in the work session and some other recent meeting too. Because the group is so new, we all agree that it would be best to just continue the current board, and that's what's on the resolution in front of us. So if I could, please, get a motion to adopt twenty-four dash oh one oh.
I make a motion that we adopt twenty-four dash zero one zero.
Second. We have a motion in a second, reconfirming the existing members to the CBB board authority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you all again. Next up is twenty-four dash oh one one, which is a resolution to adopt revisions to the fiscal twenty-four budget. Robbie?
I feel like there it goes. Okay. Every year, we try to do budget amendments, and you know, thinking back, when I started in two thousand and sixteen, our general fund was like three million dollars. And now it's over seven million dollars. That's general fund. That's not including our reserves or anything like that. And, you know, looking over the years, we've done a great job. Of course, you know, the mayor plays a critical role, especially in the beginning of the budget process, setting out the projected revenues and such. And we're very conservative. You know, we're very conservative in our approach to revenues and expenditures, and we just make sure we follow that, the lead there. And every year, we do budget amendments. Try to, in the beginning of the year, January, February, we do them again at the end of fiscal year, because our auditors look at our budget and we we try to hit the mark with them, and they make sure that we, we meet all the standards that they have to research and study, and we have to apply. So we go through, Shell and I, and we look at the budget, and we say, okay, where are we at? Where we, where we where we collect a little bit more revenue than we projected? And some of the areas are property taxes and insurance premium tax, those things come in, you can't predict what they are gonna be. For instance, property taxes, we were very conservative. We don't know what kind of pills they're gonna be or what the market's gonna look like. And with the insurance premium tax, you can never predict that. It comes in a little bit over. So basically, long and short of it, what I've, what I've done here is I've gone through and I picked out those revenues that were at current time, we have exceeded our projections. And there's some other areas in the revenues that we're going to exceed well, not well, between now and the end of June, June thirtieth, we won't know. So we're not doing anything with that right now. So what I'm gonna do is, what we're doing is we're recognizing those additional projected revenues, and we're going to apply those to the reserves. We're not going to apply them to any other department. We're not gonna put them in any, at a fire, police, public works, anything like that. We're gonna put them in the reserves at this particular time, so they can be used for later purposes. For instance, if, you know, our T-Sloss, we we're gonna do the roads, and if it exceeds what we want to do, we can add more roads. We've got more reserves, do more roads. That's really long and short of what we're gonna do with the budget amendments, and it's one of those things that the auditors look at that we do.
Anybody have any questions? One of the reasons that we budget conservatively is because when I was first elected mayor, I was put in the uncomfortable position of having to terminate a bunch of people that we couldn't afford to pay because we were so far upside down, revenues to expenses. And by having our setup this way, where we're conservative both on spending and on revenue, even if there's a bad year, even if assessments go down, we will not be in that position ever again here. And the benefit is, to Robbie's point, you know, you drop a half a million dollars to the bottom line, that can go to paving more roads. You can always find good uses for that money, but better to have it than not. Next, oh, I'm sorry. So could I get a?
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah, of course, absolutely.
Just because it sounds like it's related to this. What about, what about special things like the RICO crossroads? Whatever it is, that the project to imagine, you know, reimagine RICO as RICO crossroads.
That was.
So, yeah, as that, how, how did those, I guess I'm curious, because I don't see it.
Yeah, well, you will. This is what our retreat's about. So as soon as we get that retreat scheduled, we'll walk through the whole budgeting process, and that's where we talk about priorities and things like that. That was actually something that was put into the community development department budget.
But how do those things come before the public so that people?
In the budget process, and we adopt the budget, which we'll do this summer. Yep. Yep. No, and that's all, yeah, for sure. That's all part of that process, but this particular thing is just a, we've missed the mark in a good way, so we're recognizing that.
Start the questions out of line.
No, I get, I'm available anytime.
Did we get a motion in a second yet? Can I get a motion in a second to adopt twenty-four dash oh one, which is our fiscal year budget revision? Revision?
Make a motion to accept twenty-four zero one one.
Make a motion to accept twenty-four zero one one.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion about this one? If not, all those in favor of adopting twenty-four dash oh one one, the budget revision, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay?
Thank you.
That carries unanimously. I don't know why that's a tongue twister for me. Uh, next one is twenty-four dash oh one two, which is a uh grant uh application for uh body cams. Chris?
Uh, good evening, Mayor, City Council, Convention Visitors Bureau, guests, the beautiful citizens of uh Chattahoochee Hills. And and Darryl. Um, I'm before you this evening to present a grant opportunity for the police department uh for the acquisition of twenty new units for uh body cameras. Uh, the body cams are said to benefit the community and the department by way of uh providing additional accountability and transparency, uh, assisting in evidence collection, training and professional development, uh, reduce complaints and false allegations against police, community policing, and also improve um officer behavior. This is an opportunity through the US Department of Justice's Bureau of Justice Assistance. The project is called the Small Rural Tribal Body-Worn Camera, or SRTBBC. And we are requesting a grant in the amount of four twenty-two thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-two cents. This is a fifty fifty grant with a fifty percent match, which is an equal match by the city. And we are uh here tonight for a resolution of support to accompany our application, which is due in March. And the award, if we are selected, will be provided in uh, I believe in July.
And and I think Kevin pointed out in the work session that the current contract is timing out, and you wanna maybe fill that piece in?
That is correct. This will essentially replace the body cams that we have through Axon right now, and that is on a five-year cycle, which ends next, I believe, April.
Okay, great. Uh, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-four dash oh one two, which is the grant application for the uh body cams?
I make a motion that we adopt twenty-four dash zero one two.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion in a second. Uh, any discussion about this? Any questions? If not, all those in favor of adopting twenty-four dash oh one two, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? That carries unanimously. Next up is twenty-four dash oh one three, which is a resolution surplusing one of our old police explorers.
Uh, yes, as we discussed during the uh work session, this is one of the first vehicles that we purchased when I got here. So it has over two hundred and fifty thousand miles on it, and it's um, it's time to go out to pasture.
I agree. Uh, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-four dash oh one three and surplus that truck?
Some.
The motion?
Second.
And a second, uh, all those in favor of adopting twenty-four dash oh one three, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? That carries unanimously. Next up is twenty-four dash oh one four, which is a motion amending our schedule. And hopefully making it a little better for folks uh by moving the work session back a little bit and taking a little less room in between the two. Um, that would be changing the work session from four to four-thirty and the meeting time from six-thirty to back to six. Uh, we're gonna get this right. Um. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-four dash oh one four?
I make a motion that we adopt um twenty um four dash oh dash one four, sorry.
Sorry.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion about this one? If not, all those in favor of adopting twenty-four dash oh one four, the revised council meeting schedule, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Uh, and we're gonna do mayor and council comments, and I'm gonna start on my right this time. Ruby, what you got?
Okay, um, good evening, everyone. I'm glad everyone came out. Um, we have already started our community outreach uh program for twenty twenty-four. Um, this past Tuesday, no, it was the um thirty-first. We had our first um artist night for Black History, and we will have our artist talk on uh February the twenty-eighth. We do have a schedule on our community outreach page, and I'll send that out also on the website. And I want to say thanks to all the people who came out to be part of the committee, and we have a lot of good things coming up. So thank you, and to the staff as well.
Thanks, Ruby. Scott?
Uh, I'd just like to, again, say, thank you to everybody for coming out. Appreciate how smooth all of this goes and how uh how uh effective all the city staff are in making things happen. Um, uh, to that, to that end, uh, I think we're getting together on our our staff retreat, which I'm looking forward to, to learn a lot about uh being a council member and I'm especially looking forward to our zoning retreat with the idea of getting uh getting a lot more out in the open and in under discussion for dealing with our uh upcoming development. And as as our our wonderful presenters in the in the early going in this meeting uh pointed out, we you, we need to know who we are and what we're gonna be doing, and I appreciate being part of that. So thanks.
Awesome. Camille?
Yeah, um, after these next two resolutions, is the CVB, is that, and it gets back from the Capitol? Do we, is it all active? Are we still?
It will be at eight percent.
Eight percent.
No, just in general, like, is there another resolution coming, or is the whole, is everything sort of tied up and with a bow on it at this point?
Well, it's packaged and sent.
So that'll be it when it gets back.
Right, that's right.
Great. That was a lot of work, y'all, over the last year. I just kept seeing them come through every meeting. It was something. And I know Ruby had a lot of work that went into that, and the mayor, and I know Robbie, and of course, the board. And um, sons and sons, thank y'all for the presentation today. I, you know, I just looked at that. I love the colors. I don't know about that term that y'all cut out. That was cool. Haven't ever seen that. It must be in the world of branding, but that really looked neat. Um, I just think, I I like the idea. It looked like, it just looks like it could be easily applied, you know, when you showed the the um Chattahoochee Hill signage and how it was sort of overlaid on there. It looked really nice. I don't know. I I just appreciate that, because it looks like a ton of work. And just hearing from y'all, it's nice to see everybody and everybody get involved. So um, I took some pictures, and I'm gonna make sure y'all get them. Um, really that, and I know, I also wanted to thank the chief over here, um, Degu, for there was a uh animal incident one Sunday, and he responded, and what we realized is we work so great, and the other cities, not so much. And for four hours later, we had some residents of ours standing in the uh Publix Waffle House parking lot up in um Fairburn area, um, waiting for their police or someone to respond. And I'm thinking, thank God we live here, and and how we've really come together to help our citizens where that does not happen. So, but uh, thanks to you, because you were probably trying to grill out. The master griller. So thank you.
No rest. Robbie?
It seems like there was so many positive things tonight at the meeting. I mean, we started with great presentation. I love the branding, sons and sons, thank you. Greystone with the fiber. I mean, that's something we all want and need. Brickworks, you know. I hope it's never underappreciated, all the work they do and how they serve the community. Those are all good things. And one thing that um Richie and Tom, Camille, myself were able to attend an SFMA meeting a few weeks ago, South Fulton Municipal Association up in Hayfield. Very eye-opening. The presentation of one professor from the ARC had these maps of South Fulton, the metro area, and focused on South Fulton of the population growth, and uh there was a fancy word, but basically it was warehouses. And they showed, you know, the the display of these dots poking up, not in North Fulton, only in South Fulton, and not in Chattochee Hills. It was a little oasis, and it was just crystal clear. Our zoning is working. We are different already. It's gonna become more and more differentiated as long as we keep the zoning um tight, but it is working, and that makes me, watching that, it's made me feel good. It is working, and, you know. Scott and I are new up here. We're going to an elected officials' training meeting at the end of this month. And then several more with the city. Um, and thank everyone for coming. I would like, we have a great city and lots of positives.
I wanna, I wanna point something out. You know, I know it it may be, for people who come to a lot of these meetings, you've seen this before, but it it feels very light and loose and easy kind of in these meetings, right? There's a little joshing back and forth among the staff and council up here. Don't ever mistake that for a lack of professionalism. Uh, and I've said this many times before, I would put this crew up against any crew working in any city ten times our size, and I get to spend a lot of time in other cities and often find myself shocked at the level to which the mayor doesn't know what's happening in the fire department, or the fire department doesn't talk to the police department, or council members don't talk to each other, or whatever. Uh, this city is special. It's got special people working here, and I I will call that out in every opportunity that I get. And and again, it's not unprofessional. Everybody just likes each other, right? And and that's not a bad place to be either. And while I'm at it, I also wanna call out the volunteers. Um, you see a whole group of them in the front row here, people that have spent tons of time working on a process for the community, uh, and they are not the only ones. We have Parks Commission, Historic Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, all staffed by volunteers, who, some of whom come to every meeting, Diana, and are just participating in everything. And, you know, it's it's something that is worthy of being called out. And it's not just them, it's Brickworks, it's our churches. There are so many groups in this community that are doing public service. And it's also individuals. Ken Langley is a one-man cemetery cleanup crew, right? And you see him on that cemetery in Rico all the time. And and he'll probably be mad at me for pointing him out, but I mean, it is something that happens in this community all the time, and it has to be noticed and appreciated. It is not this way everywhere. And and again, we talked about what makes this place special. That's that's one of the things that makes this place incredibly special. And I mean, you know, it's not just that. It's these folks up here. The the community outreach stuff is not something that's in Ruby's job assignment. That's something that she's taken on, because she's trying to get different people from different parts of the community together. And and that stuff is important and special. I appreciate the fact that y'all are here. I mean, this is more people than come to the average Fulton County County Commission meeting, right? And and these meetings are boring, and it's hot, and I mean, all of that, and you're here, and I very much appreciate that. Uh, thank you for that. And Greystone Fiber, right? I mean, like, I'm sorry, that that's just like the biggest thing. And with that, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
That's second.
Uh, you guys waited, you, and maybe I wonder if I wanna keep going for a while.
Just making sure.
Uh, all those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at seven fifty-three. Uh, we always end our meeting with the opportunity for a town hall session.
And check out the visitor.
If anybody has a general question of something that's not been addressed that you think might benefit the room, it's always a good time. If there's something you specifically need for yourself, all the experts in the room, get one of them after the meeting. Uh, and in the meantime, I wanna come down and look at the swag, so if there's nothing else, thank you all. We'll see you next month.